Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for June 26. We apologize for the delay. We were behind another meeting that ran over, but we're going to try to get through our schedule for this evening or our agenda for this evening. Present this evening, we have Steve Watroba member, Richard Clark member, David Durgan member, myself Guy Horn chairman, and the town planner William Scanlon. First item on our agenda, a note that the meeting is being recorded, and the second item on our agenda, pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Under new business, our first item was reorganization of the board since we've had a town election, but we don't have a quorum present, so we're going to wait on that until the next meeting where we do have a full quorum present. The next item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes from the June 12 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I did look at the meeting minutes and I think there's something that was omitted. Mr. Scanlon made a rather significant announcement near the end of the meeting regards to his future plans, and I don't recall seeing that in the minutes.
He actually made it after the meeting.
Oh, it was after the meeting? Son of a gun. All right. Well, he snuck it in under the wire, over the wire that, all right, so I apologize. I thought it was during the meeting.
It was after the meeting.
Okay. Maybe his missus didn't know.
I'm sorry?
Maybe his missus didn't know.
It's in on the secret, Mark.
All right. Well, it's out on the airwaves now, so I guess the secret is out. Well, something is out as a secret. We didn't define it. So with that being done, I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for the June 12, 2024 meeting as presented then.
So we have a motion from Mr. Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Watroba. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm staying.
One abstention. Okay.
Daniel, you abstain?
Yes.
All right, you got copies. I don't want to be that kid who cups the glass without his pencil.
Two copies. Mr. Clark, okay. In our plans, we have none tonight, though?
Correct.
Okay. James, I'm gonna mess up this name, Valer Rainey, Comcast, pre-application review for a proposed cell tower, 55 Dudley Oxford Road with building commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, the building commissioner won't be joining us tonight.
Okay. And do we have James? Yes, we have him on Zoom. Okay. All right, so it's been a while since we've had one of these come before us, and what actually, can you just explain briefly what we're doing?
The cell tower by law requires a pre-application meeting with the applicant, more of an informal discussion of the proposal. Doesn't have to submit any plans or documentation, just to present to the board what the plan is, gather any comments or questions from the planning board that they can incorporate in their submission, but... So we just turn it over to them and let them make a presentation, and then the board can react to whatever comments or questions you may have.
So with that, Jim, if you'd like to go ahead and make a presentation?
Oh, great, yes. Okay, forgive me.
No worries.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you all. Hello, I'm Jim Valariani, and I am an attorney with Tower Cove. Tower Cove is a company that is under a build-to-suit arrangement with Verizon Wireless. So that essentially this company is helping Verizon build its new tower sites. Those sites are few and far between, but they're very expensive. And these large tower companies like Tower Cove are very good at managing these sites, ensuring all regulatory matters are in compliance and, you know, ensuring colocation by other carriers to minimize tower sites. So with me tonight is Carrie Fennelari, she's the National Director of Zoning for Tower Cove, and Jennifer Jack, who is the Director of Site Development. I've been working with them. On this site, we've got a very, we think, a very good design. It's pretty far along. Verizon actually started pursuing this site about five years ago. That's how long it can take in this industry for some of these towers to come along, budgets and what have you, and, you know, all the carriers are very competitive right now. So the site we'll be proposing, that we're getting close to filing on, is at 55 Dudley Oxford Road. That is the location that's owned by Eric Jacobson. He owns about four large adjoining tracts of land. There were two solar farms that went in there not too long ago. And we're going to be locating the tower behind one of them. The solar farms are fenced. It's what works well for us, we think, and the landlord and we think the town is that we'll be able to share the access road and the utilities that are servicing the solar farm. We'll have to extend the access road a little bit around the fence solar farm. Why don't I bring up a couple of diagrams, photos and that, so you get a sense for where we're talking about? How's that? Let me just bring this up. Okay, do you see this national wireless inventory?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I thought this was a good depiction of the tower location. You see the two solar farms on the Jacobson. These are run by Nexamp. They're a large solar company based out of Boston. So we'll have our proposed tower in the rear of the solar farm. The access road, which isn't showing on this, is coming up along here, and we'll extend it to the back. So that's the location. Let's see, I think this is down the Oxford Road and Corbin Road over in this area. Excuse me.
If I may, I'm just looking on the Town of Dudley website. 55 Dudley Oxford Road, according to the record here, is owned by Mateo and Moran Properties.
Okay, yeah, I think I've been using 55. It may be 59.
Yeah, that's correct, Jim. I've got 59.
Oh, thank you, Carrie. Yeah, so forgive me. No, we're not on their property. Forgive me for that oversight. So we're at 59 Dudley Oxford Road, okay? And let me just remove this, bring up a site plan. And do you see our set of plans?
Yes.
Great, okay. So as you can see, this is for Verizon. Now, on the first sheet, we're showing the, an overall site plan showing the tower location here in the rear. Our setbacks are quite significant. I'll show you on another plan, but as you can see, Jacobson owns to the north, to the east. This is the subject property, and to the west, you can see the access road, and like I said, we'll be coming up and around like this. And let's see. Okay, and so here's the tower site. We'll be extending the access road right about here. Here's the solar farm we'll show. You know, Verizon did go to Conscorp back in 2022. They did receive an order of conditions without any special requirements that I could tell. We will go back to Conscorp for some minor modifications. Okay, so this is the best depiction we're showing. There's a 500-foot setback from schools, daycare, residential buildings, and we are showing quite a distance, you know, an eighth of a mile in some cases, to the nearest residential properties. Here's the tower site, the solar farm that is fenced. We'll be extending, here's the access road to the solar farm, and we'll be extending it like this. Solar is fed by overhead utilities, although your bylaw requires with a waiver, we can be brought in overhead. You know, it's overhead in the streets anyway, so, you know, coming in overhead and extending overhead lines makes sense. We don't believe any portion of the site on the ground will be visible at all from a public way or from a nearby property. Just a little bit more detail with the elevations. This is some new area we'll go to Conscorp on to make our, because of that, this grading over here and these step downs on terrain. You know, we had to modify for our purposes what was previously presented to Conscorp, but for the most part, it's an existing road. I'd like to get to the elevations to show you. Okay, so here is the nearest scenic public road. This is the public scenic road mound. Is right along here, this portion of Dudley Oxford, and when we show you our photo sims in just a bit, I think you'll see that it's not visible. It's based on our analysis from that scenic road segment. Okay, so here's the compound. This would be Verizon Shelter. AT&amp;T would have a similar shelter, and T-Mobile and Dish Wireless would have likely concrete pads, monopole in the center, parking. This is all gravel, all pervious surface. There will be a propane tank for backup generator. They were required by the FCC to provide backup power for at least six hours, but on a major tower site like this, Verizon likes to have a generator. So we're allowed to construct a monopole, apply for a monopole, which is what we're showing here on this elevation. The height that Verizon needs is essentially 160. The top of this pole is 160 with a five-foot lightning rod, which the lightning rod is invisible. And then we show future carriers. This is the typical installation by the carriers in the industry. They don't always have. It's a three-sector installation at high-height sites like this, and they don't always have these four panels intended for a sector. Sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three. So, but this gives a general sense of what the pole could ultimately look like from a drawing, and, you know, and here is what we call the colonial cap. The triangular sectors, alpha, beta, gamma, for the antennas from a bird's eye. And let me get to the photo simulations, which we thought were pretty favorable. And, okay, let's see. Do you see this photographic simulation package?
Yes.
Great, great, thank you. So what's shown in red, the balloon was not visible, according to our consultant. Okay, these are all the surrounding roads. Here's the tower site in the middle. This is, I believe, a one-mile radius. The area is showing green on the public way, where you didn't access any public property, although they did get over into the school parking lot.
Excuse me, if I may. Can I interrupt with a question?
Of course.
Okay, in regards to our, looking at our bylaw, if you will, section 11, personal wireless service facilities. Now, where are we in terms of center road? This, the congregational church specifically, you say that one mile radius.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, because according to the bylaw, intensity, new personal wireless service facility structures, for these monopoles, shall not be located such that they are spaced closer than one and one-half miles measured in a horizontal plane to an existing standalone personal wireless service facility structure.
Well, does the church have a tower?
The church has a tower. Church has a, Belfry has a tower, and it was just recently extended.
That should...
That's within a, that's within a mile and a half then.
Okay, is it, is it a cell tower or is it the church building tower?
It is a cell tower that is an integral part now of the church. The church, Belfry, effectively is a cell tower, if you will.
Okay, that's, that's, in my understanding and looking at your bylaw, that is not applicable?
I don't know where that understanding would come from, frankly. How is that not the case?
Well, we're gonna need this height. Well, I'd have to go back. I'm not aware of that location, sir, because it's not a tower. I didn't pay it any attention for this pre-app.
Well, there is a cell service facility there, which was, again, recently extended over the last couple of years. Also, just going back a bit, you mentioned the height, 160 feet?
Correct.
Okay, again, referencing our bylaw, if you will. New ground-mounted structures shall be limited to a monopole type only and shall not exceed 90 feet in total height above the adjacent ground level. Special permit can be granted, so you would be looking for a special permit or a special exclusion or waiver, if you will, of that height dimension?
Right outside the circle.
I got it, correct. Yeah, we wouldn't be going through these motions if we didn't study everything from the back, A to Z.
Okay.
We, we need this sort of height in this location. I'll take a look at the church so we can address that concern when we file and get in front of you in person. And, you know, these church locations, when they're in downtown, they can be of use to the carriers. I don't know which carriers are over in that church.
AT&amp;T, I believe, wasn't it, at one point?
Okay.
I thought it was Verizon.
Verizon?
I thought it was.
All right.
You were talking about that one year?
I'm sorry?
You were talking about that one year?
I'm talking about that same church, the infamous church.
Few years ago, right?
Oh, yes.
Raised it up? I thought that was Verizon.
It may have been. These guys coming up.
Well, great. I, I, I look forward to taking a look at it and educating the personnel on it.
It's off of here. It's down in here somewhere. It's gonna be close.
Yeah, so we also have another recently placed monopole cell phone tower on the corner of Hall Road and Route 197. And that might be within a mile and a half of your site.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at the bylaw, see what we have to do to make any adjustments if they aren't necessary. I appreciate that information. We still do. Need to get the radio frequency plots from Verizon, which will show, we expect those any day now, those will show the existing cell sites they have in your town, which we're required to show. Any future sites they have planned, and the coverage with just those sites, and then showing this gap that we have, which this site is intended to fill for Verizon. So I appreciate that. The chairman, what's the address on the church? What's that street?
It's on Center Road. I don't have the exact street number.
Do you know what the denomination is?
Yes, the...
Yeah, congregation.
Congregational United Church of Christ. It is the only church that you'll find on Center Road.
Center Road, so it's actually... It's almost directly across from the intersection of Tan Yard Road and Center Road.
Right, across from the Black Tavern.
It's, it's pretty much as close as you can get to the Nichols College campus.
You can see 197 is pretty straight going down there, and if you follow that trajectory of 197, I would say that, I almost guarantee you that that universal tag is gonna be within that one and a half radius. That's a one-mile radius, this yellow circle?
Yeah, wherein I think we've got a one and a half mile requirement for separation of towers. Pardon me?
One and a half mile requirement.
Yeah, okay, so we will, again, make sure we take a look at that. You know, my familiarity with Dudley, I haven't been out to your town since, I think it was 1981, when I attended Boy State.
The church address is 135 Center Road, 135 Center Road.
Okay, great. Take a look at it. We'll certainly take a look at it and address it in our application and when we make our presentation. I appreciate that. Would you like me to go through these, these photos?
Sure.
Great, okay. Like I said, what's shown in green is where our consultant indicated visibility in one location. This number one was obstructed visibility, so we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 12, and 14. This is photo one.
What were the red dots again? Could you go back a minute? I may have lost some, some part of the color scheme here.
Yeah, this analysis indicates that the red dots show the, what we call the balloon is not visible. So that's about a five-foot diameter balloon that is raised to the height of the tower. And then we take photos all around the area for the visibility study, and then our engineers superimpose the tower in the place of the balloon. So you'll see that right with photo one, which is next. Here's the balloon. This is on Corbin Road, and then we show, you know, the tower.
Where?
The top of the tower.
Where is the tower?
It's just even the trees.
You just see the very top of the tower as a tree line.
All right, and then photo two, this is from Dudley Oxford. This is, photo two is in this, over here, Dudley Oxford, you know, just in between the school and the cell site, running along here. So, yeah, I mean, this is pretty wide open. These are the few areas where it's wide open, maybe two or three, again, based on the study. So from this perspective, yes, I mean, these are high-height towns. They're gonna be visible. That's just a given. But we do think that this does have limited visibility, though, for the most part, and this is from Corbin Road, from the cemetery that I'm...
Okay, that's with vegetation. Once those leaves are gone, your visibility is, is increased, right?
I would think so, sure, yeah. Unless you've got rhododendrons, that's, all pines around. I don't think you do. So, yeah, we would anticipate that. This just happened to be when the study was done at this time of year.
I understand.
And, okay, so from Dudley Oxford, this is one of the more visible sites. So this is, again, this is just with the Verizon. They're the anchor tenant. They're the ones driving this site with their radio frequency coverage. And, and let's see, I don't know, this doesn't really, not visible. See, you can see up here on the upper right-hand corner where it indicates not visible.
Yeah, with the trees.
So here's a photo from Dudley Oxford. This was photo location number seven. It's the balloon. This looks like it's from the school parking lot. And there you have, from a distance, you know, a pole. You can see that, what it looks like in relation to the utility poles that run throughout the town. Overhead, not visible. So, yeah, we've got some, with the exception of some areas along Dudley Oxford Road near the school, we think we've got some minimal visibility.
All right, I would submit that minimal visibility is somewhat subject to seasonality.
Yeah, I won't, I won't deny that.
Okay.
But this is the time of year it was taken.
Right, I understand.
I'm not gonna go and I'm not gonna show up in front of your board and tell you that 160-foot structure is not gonna be visible. That's the whole point. We need that height. It's, it's utilitarian.
It came a lot of circle.
And, so, I think we've, you know, we've shared some draft zoning drawings, which we're still putting together, the final touch is on, or we're waiting with Verizon. I mean, the site was at first looked at by Verizon starting around 2018, so they're gonna update their radio frequency plots to include whether that church at 135 Center is... Part of those plots will, remains to be seen. But we'll certainly come in with a complete package. You know, we'll, we'll seek waivers on a number of items that I think are reasonable and practical, overhead utilities instead of underground. Landscaping there, the facility, it's unmanned, it's locked. I don't know whether the gate off of Dudley Oxford Road is locked by Nexamp. Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. But you see in the, you know, with these solar farms, you see your tower structures going in near them. You see them going in quite often at storage facilities where you have wide-open buildings. And so, you know, we, we think this is a good location for us, and in terms of meeting the radio frequency requirements of Verizon. And co-locating on a location that is buildable, that we believe meets your bylaw, and that can be supported under the Telecommunications Act. Which I will highlight in our application, you know, regarding, you know, reasonableness of review, nondiscrimination, and I don't know if you've had any familiarity with that with past tower applications. How many towers do you have in town? Do you mind if I ask? Do you know off the top of your head? I'm not talking about church towns. I'm talking about the standalone cell towers.
I think I know three.
Maybe three.
You have three? Okay.
I think three. So another one you might want to think, you might want to look at is this one located on Route 31, Dresser Hill Road. And that's, that could also fall within your mile and a half radius of your location.
Okay, we're gonna double-check all that. We'll have the radius shown on a set of plans, so we can show that. I'll go back and scrub. I mean, you've got a pretty thorough bylaw. We've looked at it pretty closely.
I don't think you have. I would just call your attention, there's another part of the bylaw, and I'm referencing it again, it's section 11 of the bylaws, but 11.04.00, use of existing structures. Are you familiar with that part of the bylaw?
Absolutely, yes. No, we would, with, with, with all sincerity and all kidding aside, we wouldn't be here undergoing what we know is going to be a scrutinized application process if there wasn't a need for this. And these towers are expensive to build. They can reach upwards of $500,000.
All right, let me ask you a question. What, what is the benefit of the Town of Dudley in terms of its residents? Are we gonna get super-duper cell service suddenly as a result of this tower?
I would say within a mile and a half to two miles, you will, but that's, you know, these are on a honeycomb cellular, that's what you call cell site. Cellular bases, octagonal cell shapes that all interlock, and the frequencies are reused from cell site to cell site, because they have limited frequencies they operate on. So they have to spread them around and use some in one cell and, you know, others in another cell, and so there's seamless coverage. The mobile users hand off from one cell to another as they're driving in town, walking in town, whatever the case might be. as they're driving in town, walking in town, whatever the case might be. You know, if you're Boston, you're walking, you're jumping from one cell to another as you turn a corner in the city. Here, as you jump from one cell tower to another, the network picks up your phone and makes the jump, the connection to the next tower. So we will have a radio frequency engineer from Verizon present at the hearing. Will provide an affidavit of the need for this coverage. Will provide the radio frequency plot. And we'll establish a need for this site and at that height. And I think you'll find our presentation, Towerco does, Towerco operates, you know, approximately 1,000 tower sites. They've got contracts with all the major carriers. And Verizon is relying on that because of the expense in building out these sites. The carriers, they're just too competitive now. They've got to keep their expenses down. And so they are contracting with companies such as Towerco. Really, take the brunt of this. I mean, is Towerco where is unsuccessful at a site? It's a loss. So, you know, Verizon needs this site. It's been in the works since 2018. And, you know, we look forward to, do you have a full five-member board as it is right now? Do you have any vacancies?
No, we have a full, we have a full board. The one member is absent this evening.
Oh, that's fine, okay. Do you have any alternate members as well or just the five?
We just have the five.
Okay. And do you anticipate using any consultants for this? Do you know, or? Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't.
We did have recourse at Town Council with regards to the cell tower at the church in past. I don't know that we would necessarily do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about legal consult. I'm talking about other consultant, peer review by engineers, that sort of thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, why, why are you asking whether or not we have a full five-member board? Why are you asking if we have any alternates?
Well, you know, it's Dudley, it's the summertime. We're going to want a five-member board when it comes time for a vote on this, just given that we need four out of five votes. So I'm simply asking from a procedural standpoint, as I always would with any board in any city or town in Massachusetts, you know, what is your current board makeup? How many board members do you have? And will we anticipate full attendance? You know, I'm sure you're very, you know, committed board members. I didn't mean to suggest it.
Okay, yeah. We try and control the public hearings.
That's great. I'm happy to hear it. I'm glad. Look forward to meeting you in person.
The one thing I can, I'm remembering from the last one that we had on the universal tag one on the corner of 197 and Hall Road. There was a request that we had an outside consultant review all of the, I'm trying to think of what they called it.
Well, you do have the option of bringing on board an RF engineer to look at.
That's what it was.
Look at this project.
Yeah.
That would be up to you to decide whether you wanted to hire somebody to provide that kind of an analysis.
Yeah, we did have that for the last one. And that, that last cell tower actually ended up in a, in a private lawsuit against the planning board. So.
Jim, when do you anticipate filing?
Well, we won't be able to do July, and it looks like in August you might only have one meeting. So at best, whatever meeting you have in August, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's first meeting in September. But we'll certainly keep you posted, Bill.
Excuse me, mention made, I think you said something with regards to legislation. Is that, did I get that correctly?
No, I referenced the Federal Telecom Act.
Okay.
Which showed them.
Yeah, we have copies of that readily available to us. Is that not the Spectrum Act, is it?
The Spectrum Act deals with co-locations. The Federal Telecom Act and additionally the Federal Communication Commission's order on what they call the shot clock process deals with new towers. Okay, I shall get through this in as quick a time as needed.
If I may, would you be kind enough as to email Mr. Scanlon with those citations so that we could have those references specifically?
No, they'll be included certainly front and center in our application. Absolutely.
All right, well, if they could come in advance of the application, that would be appreciated because I suspect it's a very scintillating reading.
If you find it scintillating, by all means, I'll get it to you.
I doubt that I will, but I've just been laboring myself through that. Having you more time to do so would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I had another question. I was curious. I've seen in the past other cell towers that were constructed in a way so that, I mean, they don't pass off as being trees, but they're closer to trees, like they're, they're green in color. They have something added to them so that they can kind of blend in a little bit better. I noticed in some of those photographs, they're just right above the tree line, the top of the tower. So if it had something like that, it might actually not blend in too badly as opposed to being just a stark shiny.
Piece of metal.
Piece of metal, yeah. So I'm wondering whether or not that's an option?
Yeah, okay, so we, well, I'm not going to say it doesn't happen. You've seen them, I've seen them. I've pre-vented them before out of necessity in some locations. We don't like to do them for various reasons, and for many reasons, they don't fit, at least in my experience, a location such as this. Typically, they're a lower-height structure that's in a cluster of trees that surrounds the location in a 360-degree circular fashion. You know, I don't think we have that here. Really, those.
That's the old Despero Farm. I think it is quite a lot of trees around there. I don't know.
Okay, well, that's, that's not what we're proposing. We're certainly, it's, the bylaw requires a monopole either of a dull blue or a dull gray color. That's what we're proposing. That's what, that's what we'll be seeking. We don't think that this is the setting for a tree tower, and so we would, that's not something we're interested in doing.
But you are going to be requesting waivers, correct?
A few.
Okay, all right. Just saying, you know, not feeling.
Nothing significant. I mean, there's only so far you can go in requesting waivers. I mean.
Right.
So, and by the way, there's no lighting on this. There's no lights at the top. There's no aircraft patterns. It's not, if a tower is 200 feet or higher, it has to be lit automatically. We're not at that, and there are no, any airports nearby were cleared by Towerco what they call an airspace review, so there'll be no lighting on the pole. Bill, I imagine I'll be staying in touch with you as we move along with our Towerco team and the Verizon team. Can I just take a moment?
I would just like to mention that I'll be leaving my position in early July. So I'm not sure who the contact would be at this point, probably through the Town Administrator's Office temporarily.
You're leaving the town?
Yes.
Oh, well, I hope for, you know, excellent reasons for all involved, but I'll.
It's a self-self thing. He's had enough.
So we'll be getting a replacement probably, you know, within a couple of months. So by the time you're ready to file, hopefully there'll somebody, somebody will be here to shepherd that application through.
Okay. They didn't fire you or anything like that.
No, I'm retiring. Thank you.
Oh, well, now I'm jealous because I'm getting, so. Okay, let's see, I'm just taking a quick look at my notes. I don't see anything right now that I'd like to add. I mean, I think we did a pretty thorough informal meeting. We've shown you what we have right now, and I think some of your questions and points were based on your experience in the past with other sites and well-taken on our end. And we'll make sure that we address those at the hearing. Now, I could see this certainly being, you know, a multiple hearing process. And I, you know, I'll just ask Carrie and Jennifer if they have anything to add at this point. If not, if there are no more questions, I think we can wrap this for tonight.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Likewise, I've got nothing else at this time.
I do want to ask the gentleman on the, on the, on the application plans, do you require the full-size 24 by 36-inch, or is that what you'd like to have in front of you?
Typically, we get, you know, four or five full sets, and then we can get some 11 by 17 reductions.
Okay. I think you asked for a copy, yeah, okay.
We do distribute them to other departments. Not every department wants a full set of plans, but certain departments do need them, so we try to provide them to them.
Yeah, and we'll submit a PDF as well. I also wanted to ask, is it, I mean, I think we have an understanding of what relief is required in permits, but is it customary in the town to file and request an opinion with the building inspector? Or is that at the, it's not necessary? Some towns like to see the building inspector give a once-over of the bylaw.
No, we sent him a copy of the submission. He's free to comment or not as he sees fit.
Okay, great. All right, we'll do some more homework. I appreciate the other locations you pointed out and some of the suggestions. And if you have nothing else, we'll bid you adieu and appreciate the time.
Good.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Why do we need a four-on-five vote?
Special Department. You see, in the height.
Okay, next thing on our agenda for this evening, the complete streets discussion with Rebecca Nolton. I think you said that she was.
She didn't respond to my emails.
Okay, no worries. So we'll just, we'll just leave her off the agenda until she contacts us.
I think so.
We have number six, complete the registry of deeds signature form. Is that available for us to sign tonight?
Yes. Or did you put the registry of deeds form in the packet?
I think you had that under his business.
Yep, I got a copy.
Your business?
So we're missing Dan. I'll let him know that he can either come in.
We could all just sign one copy and give it to him? At least we'll get four out of the five tonight.
Whoa, that was impressive. Sorry. Should have passed it to David.
You parted the red seeds.
The special department that this guy was talking about? Would that be through us or through his EBA? Planning Board.
Planning Board. Okay, next on our agenda, standard business discussion, status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pier fun Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates, Sophie's Way.
I don't have any updates.
Next one, inspections, actions associated with site plans, Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Beat there. In terms of Tobin Farms, wasn't something coming from Jeff Walsh regards to the cost estimate? Or is that still?
Richard, that came, that came, sorry, Mr. Chairman. But I was just going to remind, Richard, we talked about that at the last meeting.
We did, yeah.
We're going to go before conservation now?
Of conservation now?
That would be the next step is to, they need to file a notice of intent because of the work with the detention basins and the stream crossings.
All right.
Did they already have one from originally?
Perhaps, because that was probably two thousand.
It would expire.
Yeah.
For five years?
They don't last forever. This is like 20-year subdivision.
Oh, okay, this, these things ever be done.
Next one would be the inspections, actions associated with the site plans. We've got Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres. We've got SEP Solar Oxford Avenue. We've got JD&amp;D 24 Oxford Avenue. We've got Stevens Mill Solar Project at the landfill and the Dudley Housing Authority.
So I drove through the Housing Authority the other day. It appears to be completed.
Okay.
Striking it down, cars are parked out. I'll contact Quinn Engineering, have him do a final inspection and have the applicant do whatever would be needed to complete that project.
I went to the landfill today, and it looks like a lot of, a lot of stuff that was going on over there is moved around in the fence like that they had at the entrance where they were going in and out of the solar project has been taken down and the equipment is moving out. So it looks like they're, they may be wrapping up there too. Anything on the mill? Any yard sales?
As far as I know, all activity is stopped.
Okay.
And they cleaned up like all the tables and everything, and I think they're done with yard sales, so.
I believe there's an opportunity for some additional historic tax credits that the applicant is pursuing as a, you know, possible funding supplement, so.
So they may come in ask for endorsement from the planning board?
I don't think so. It doesn't require a planning board activity. What's left on SEP Solar on Oxford Ave? I thought that was like, pretty much. Last I heard, there were, you know, seating, ready for the seat to take hold.
The grass to grow.
Oh, okay. So I think that should be done and wrapped up soon.
And JD&amp;D over here on Oxford Ave, that was also, seemed like that was pretty.
I think they were having an issue with electricity supply.
Oh, that's right. I remember that now. So as far as you know, that's not, well, what am I saying? I know very well. National Grid.
I saw National Grid over there the other, last week. There was like three trucks over there.
Oh, yeah, I've had three trucks drive up and do nothing and drive away, so I wouldn't necessarily say that.
And maybe we could just mention on Legacy Landing, you did, you did check, Bill, and we have, they have a $494,000 bond?
Bond, correct. So if we have to, we can, you know, call in that bond to complete the project if that would be necessary.
We should notify the gentleman who was here that night because he's going to be the one by now. He's already been at the coffee shop telling everybody that the town of Dudley doesn't even require anybody to do anything.
All right, nothing else on those five or six projects? Let's go to the planners, please.
The project, the sewer and sidewalk project around Mill Street, Village Street, and Odd Lot Place. There was a pre-construction meeting today. We anticipate work starting probably in August or early September. There'll be a meeting with the residents to explain to them the project, so they'll be aware of the timeframes and what to expect as that project goes forward.
And how to get in.
And probably in late July, I would assume.
Get in and out of the neighborhoods. Yeah, okay, that's good. Anything else?
No.
Comments from the planning board?
I just, I think we all recognize the value that Mr. Scanlon has brought to the table in these many meetings that we've had. And I think we may have mentioned the last time how much we will be missing his services. But apparently that was not part of the record because it was after the meeting. So make it official and admit it to the meeting or cite it as part of the meeting. Our thanks to Mr. Scanlon for his years of service with us.
Appreciate it.
And we can only hope from here.
Yeah, and I would say, Bill, that I think the whole town owes you a lot of gratitude and thanks for all the, what's the word I'm looking for? The.
Efforts.
The grants, the grants that you got for the town in various, you know, the sidewalks. Mason Road wouldn't be there without your help, and the rail trail getting paved and all these other grants that you went out and found and got, got a hold of for the town. It's, you know, it's really appreciative, and you did an awful lot of work in a short period of time.
Thank you. I've, you know, I've tried to, you know, do what I could, but we also have a very capable team. You know, Town Hall is also part of that process, so it's not one person that's responsible for everything, but it's, it's worked pretty well.
But it's good when you have somebody with the knowledge on how to do it, so. Every team needs a leader. I don't think we'll have any comments from the audience. Under other business, consideration of summer meeting schedule and next regular meeting date, possibly July 10th.
So normally you meet once a month in the summer. You could, it's your regular schedule if you wanted to.
Okay.
I suggested July 10th.
I suggested July tenth because that'll be my last day. So I could come to the meeting that night and, you know, be the, uh, you know, take care of whatever issues come up at that point. And then if you had another meeting in August, you could set that for the first, you know, the second or the fourth Wednesday of the month and, uh...
Uh, forgive me for taking things out of order perhaps, but, uh, transitioning, uh, that we stand that someone will be taking your place, uh, you're just gonna basically leave them the keys and the phone number and, uh...
Well, Kai, did you want to mention the email that came through today?
Yeah, so, um, basically what we're doing is we're looking into, um, having a, like a temporary replacement with Central Mass Regional Planning, with a, a member from Central Mass Regional Planning helping out until we can, you know, staff the position. And one of the things that was brought up was maybe we could, uh, they're working with other towns currently right now that are looking for, um, staffing a town planner position. And maybe we could work a deal where, you know, the town of Dudley and one or two other towns get together and hire one town planner as, as a full-time planner and that planner works at two or three towns. Because right now, Bill, you're working about fifteen hours per week.
Correct.
So we would need somebody that could fill Bill's shoes, you know, maybe they need, you know, he's got big shoes to fill. So I think they may need to work more than fifteen hours to get everything done. But, I mean, like, that's what we're, that's what the proposal would be.
In terms of the, the master plan somewhere down the horizon, if you will, I suspect that that fifteen hours be consumed pretty quickly in some of the meetings and some of the involvement there. So I don't know how we're gonna apportion someone's time if it's, you know, here, there and everywhere. It's, it's, it could be a, a real Rubik's cube in terms of putting those pieces together.
So the town administrator is, is, is aware of this and, you know, will be going forward. I mean, I, I can't say if we're gonna have an increase in that line item for the budget or if there's gonna, if there's no increase, then we have to make it work with what we got.
Okay.
Is your position appointed or are you hired by Brutus?
I was hired by the town administrator.
But normally, your position would be hired by the town administrator?
I believe so. I, you know, I don't, I haven't seen a job description when the town revised all the job descriptions. For some reason, the town planner position wasn't done. So I'm not sure, uh, you know, what the formality of it is, but I'm assuming it would fall to the town administrator.
So why don't we... Do we wanna take a vote tonight that the next meeting will be the tenth? Is that, that's our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on that. That's our next regularly scheduled meeting. But will we take a vote that we would cancel the second meeting in July? So I'm moved. All right, we have a, we have a...
I'll second.
Mr. Durgans, uh, made the motion. Mr. Clark seconded that we're gonna, uh, cancel the second meeting in July for some more hours. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, do we wanna make a vote on that we're gonna cancel one of the meetings in August? And which, if we do, which one would it be, the first or the last?
Probably the last, right? Cause you go on three weeks from July tenth to get to August, so... Cause there's three more weeks in, in July. That's my...
No, I agree with that logic, sure.
Uh, the other thought too is it may take some time to get somebody in place as a replacement for Mr. Scanlon. So may, person might be available towards the end of the month as opposed to the beginning of August, given vacation schedules that people likely have for the summer.
Do you wanna just make this decision on the tenth?
That might be a good idea.
We could do that, okay. So we'll table that until the next meeting to see where we're gonna push it to. Approvals of consultant vouchers, there's none?
Correct.
Uh, other town notices or correspondence?
None.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.